Good evening, everyone in the audience. Good evening, staff, more staff and elected officials in the audience. Anyway, we have one item on the agenda tonight, that is work session on the FY 2019 budget. Just a couple of highlights. The tax rate will remain the same as it did in FY 2018. The Commissioners agreed on Tuesday to maintain the 33 cent tax differential for North Beach residents and for Chesapeake Beach residents as well. This proposed budget has no new capital projects in it. And next week, prior to the regularly scheduled council meeting, this is on the 10th, there'll be a public hearing on the budget, then we will have to introduce an ordinance to approve it, and then in June, vote on that ordinance. Then we'll have time for it to take effect before July 1st. So, that's kind of the landscape. I'm going to ask Joanne, if she would to, kind of lay out for us, Joe, how you want to go over the proposed budget and the notes and the few changes that you made and what was discussed a month ago.
Well, I'd like to just start with the notes and just generally go over them briefly, because we did that last meeting, but there were a few changes. And then, I gave you a worksheet of kind of bullet points where I see that your attention seems to focus. And then, as we're going through these questions and anything like that, would be appreciated, if you have it. Can I sit while you...
Sure. Let me just add one other highlight to those that are really interested in the big picture. The water and sewer rates will remain the same for FY 2019, although there will be a reduction in the minimum from 10,000 gallons to 8,000 gallons. And then, we talked about transitioning toward a different rate structure over a period of time. This is part of that transition.
Okay. Like the mayor led in with, the tax rate will remain the same, so we're not going with the constant yield rate for this year, because it's a minute amount of revenue increase. The only item that is of concern that the public needs to be aware of is the trash rate will be going from 295 per household to 327 per household. And the last time we increased this fee was in June of 2014. Income tax and other, that's the same. Highway user revenue, there was some new legislation passed, and since our last meeting, and we received an increase in highway user revenue. We had anticipated about 92,000, but in all actuality, we should receive 32,000 in state highway revenue, and then 69 in a one-time grant, bringing total revenue up to 101,656 for that item. Before you, included in the budget is a, it's going to be a proposal for an increase to the rental license. The rental licenses are for a three-year period, they're currently at 150. We're asking for a minimum increase of at least $100, and I think that's a 66% increase.
It's big.
Yeah, yeah. But again, I gave you the breakdown of what code enforcement costs versus the revenue that we take in. So you have that in your own paperwork from last month. Gaming revenue is online, so we should meet our projections now that we have three years worth of revenue to estimate from. Beach, and the beach fees now the county fees, we're not proposing any changes. Shirt Shack, we have estimates in our budget, and you know what they are based on our last meeting and the detailed report given to you. Dragon Boat revenue, there is no revenue for Dragon Boat, but I just wanted to make sure your attention when we go through Richard's report is on the expenses for events and what payroll is needed for events throughout the year. And you'll see that detail in our report, and then Richard will go over in more detail with you the functionality of his department in conjunction with Donnie. There is no New Year's Eve party planned in the future, for right now. Town Council, there's a proposed salary of 3,000 for town council members, just to, your trial expense and all the paper and the things that you guys generate during the year. There's a little bump in increases for license inspections and code salary, not so much the dollar amount per hour, but the amount of hours that are needed for not only breaking this new duty as zoning, but also for the seasonal code enforcement, because there's a higher demand, but as we go through this, we're finding that out. And you see the new item, which has become an annual fee, is $6,000 for the new code enforcement software. But I can tell you this, we've determined that the rental portion of ComCape does not meet or needs as a town, so we will not be renewing that section of ComCape. So there will be some savings here, we just don't know what that is yet. We're still looking for a different kind of software. License and education and training, you'll see a little increase to that. We've had the new notification system for the website, the text and email systems, and with that comes fees, and you see what those are, they're now included in this budget. There's a new computer plan for the marketing department to help do some of the brochures and designs that are intricate. And then, we have the contributions. In the contributions, there's a $2,500 miscellaneous, we get requests throughout the year, little organizations wanting an ad here or something like that. We do an annual 6,000 to the fire department, and then Calvert Memorial, remember the presentation about the new wing and the hospital, and that's a commitment of 5,000 per year for the next five years. Ground red parking, Mr. Russo, you see that. Annual maintenance agreement for the fire beds, that has increased, because you have more demand out here with the streetscape, plus Calis Park, you didn't have all the maintenance that's required for Calis Park, now you have a few flowers and trees, it's nice. And then, American Bloom, you see that there's also the request for American Bloom and additional plantings for that, so that instead of just the spring/summer plantings, we still have color plantings in the fall, up until the Christmas time when the lights come on. As part of American Bloom, I think that was part of the recommendation, wasn't it? You have the wages, what we anticipate for the Shirt Shack, Beach Patrol salary and wages, you have those, and you know about the minimum wage increase this year, it's jumping from 9.25 to $10.10. I wish I had that minimum wage when I was younger. I'm sure some of us did. Public Works Department, there's no new equipment in Public Works, there's a trash kit and trash contract, it's not the same, the only thing is cooling up is because of the CPI. Sewer use revenue was in, is increased, only because of the invoice we received last month with the budget for this year coming up, up on 19. It's over $138,000 increase in plant costs for the operation maintenance of the water plant, I mean, the sewer plant in Chesapeake Beach, which we have no control over. But we do have control over getting the flow meter. But I left that number in my FY 19 budget of 15,000, because I think since Donnie's conversation with you, and Donnie may want to update them on that, there were some other connections.
You want me to do it now?
Yes, can you just tell them that?
Donnie, tell us what you're doing. In lieu of not being able to get a flow meter...
We're pretty much exhausted in the fact that, the flow meter in Greenwood, we had to wrap one out, and look at the space and look at where we need to put it to make sure if we were getting a flow coming from the channel. The type of flow meter we need, the stuff at work, will not fit in the pump station, because we had to remove the pump, send it out, and just a big ratio that wouldn't fit right. He tried to drive, and he pretty much emailed me like 15, when he kind of looked at our reps. The only way we could do something up there is dig a manhole and put it, you know, have to cut the pipe, put another manhole in with this little meter in. But since then, we really have, me and Paul got together, and I went out in the fields and walked on the county side, and really been looking at all the connections. And we had connections at Second Street, Third Street, Fourth Street, Fifth Street, Sixth Street, and Eighth Street, that come in from the county. And what we did, we asked Pete Paul, Matt, to highlight the area that the county now comes to us, including Wendy Hill School, Chesapeake Light House, Townhouse, and the whole area. He took it back to his office, and Google, you know, satellite, you work, and now we're kept in all the lot, actual lots, all the houses have been built in the recent years since the agreement was made back in like 1996. And in lieu of a flow meter, we still can do an estimated flow, an average household usually uses around 225 gallons a day of flow, so with that, we can come up with a good estimated volume. We didn't give up the flow meter idea federally, but that running due a section anyway. I'd still like to give it, if it's affordable and possible, to pull in Greenwood, which is a problem area, and that does cover a large area from Seventh Street all the way over to 10th Street and 11th, and enough to pass, which we would encourage to get that. The rest of the location are manholes that are out in the street, which has no power or no really access, so we're looking at, certainly an affordable flow meter, that might be possible, but I just wanted to let you know that a flow meter might not be anywhere. You're already preparing a count, and we'll have a federal account for you, rather than helping you give up the households at least. And we can call out County Water and Sewer, I scheduled a meeting for them next week, the walking area, get a handful of set of plants removed through.
Tell us some of the data.
What's that?
Tell us some of the data.
Yeah, well...
Yeah, probably when you got it down.
They got a guy who kind of runs their fuel operations, James Ritter, I'm going to meet with him, hit a good ass though. We showed the mayor, we've been sending some pictures where they have sort of cleanouts in the ditch line, it's totally broken off, so on a first point of that kind of issue, but then also get a good ass though, get them to give us a count, tell them what we're going with our flow, you know, for the frequent plant, you know, this or that type thing. We're literally about ready to pump station, maybe, you know, we want you to pay your fair share, come up with all the information and kind of stuff we need to do in the agreement over the next six months, seven years.
We have a whole agreement now, we're at least saying, you know, what does the whole agreement say?
I don't know, he probably knows it better than me, they pay a percentage of all the grants, if you build them at the end of the year.
I think it's 51% of one of the pump stations, which I want to say is the main pump station, you remember?
I don't know. Yeah, Chesapeake Down, there's all that flow.
It had 30% of one of the other pump stations.
Right, it's like 33% of Greenwood.
And I can send you the agreement, I have it.
Great.
I have.
All that flow does come through Greenwood, you know, some of that in, but then a lot of it also goes to Chesapeake, so not only do we pay for maintenance and upgrade day-to-day operation, but we do build them at the end of the year, the percentage is in the corner here. But there's been a lot, I think that was like 1996, probably, I think.
What was that?
I know it's, you know, before that, I know it's, you know, the house up there is probably, probably doubled by the year since then.
When was Wendy Hill?
By when Wendy was very, very big, that's when those people, people moved for that.
They enforced me in the past, and...
It was 20 years.
Yeah, it's not, but it held at Madison up there on Fifth Street, and also Chesapeake Light House, I always worked in county when that was going on, so check that pump station there, so they got two pump stations in Chesapeake Light Houses coming to us also.
That's what I'm saying, I'm knowing.
Do you anticipate any pushback?
I think we're going to go with the...
It is what it is.
Right, that's what I said, I'm talking to one of the county, we're not trying to blame them or anything, but, you know, we're just trying to be facts, we're getting there. I will have enough information, rather accurate, and a lot of people where they can't really question, I think once we show them, we give them our totals, and they'll be like, oh, you know, James is real good, he's a good guy to work with, that level, Wayne is a division chief, I've never really worked with him that much, I know he's in there, he's looking at retirement, but I, you know, I think it's above that, you know, there are a few guys that are good to work with.
I know Wayne is a good guy.
Yeah, he's pretty good, I used to work with him, but like when they go up to their weather finance, their county attorney, then that's where the agreement, that's where it's coming.
Okay, everybody up to date on what we're doing? Okay, Mike wants to know that date.
Yeah, okay, I'll listen.
Okay, Joe?
Okay, then, this afternoon, I sent you an email, which detailed the changes that occurred since our last meeting, and like we talked about, the highway user revenue, which affected the general fund total revenues. Then the annual maintenance agreement on the fire beds went from 47 to 50,000, and then removed the service celebration fee, and then part-time officers increased from 36,000 to 54,000. And I'm not sure if you read the notes on the Excel sheet, you have a back history on that. Right now, we pay $35 an hour for part-time. Anywhere outside of North Beach, because Robin Mill, Abner's, Calvert County, Chesapeake Beach, they get $50 an hour. So it's been tough trying to get coverage for what we needed for, so the mayor has agreed right now to bump to 40 to get us to the end of June, and then 45 moving forward for next year. And in my notes, I gave you the breakdown of what hours really go to what, and you can see that detail. The resident deputy service budget we received since we last met, it was at 454, it's increased to 472, which includes purchase of a vehicle, and the bumps that you had agreed to with Lieutenant Norton and Sergeant, perhaps? And the equipment warranty in order to allow for the sheriff's office, I took that out of Public Works budget, because it hadn't been used in the last two years, because it was really put in when we had the F-250, and because we don't have that diesel vehicle anymore, it's really not necessary, which affected the total general fund expense, which again, affected the net profit loss or the reserve that we may have, depending on whatever changes you guys incorporate or make here, it could go up or down. And then, you have a draft of the water and sewer rates based on a 8,000 gallon minimum.
Start with Dylan.
Now, we've covered a lot of these items, I guess the, the main concern is what the plan is about the rental revenue. Any thoughts or...
License?
Yes.
I mean, to me, it seems anything is a big jump, I mean, increasing it, so it was 150, and we're going to 250, so it's a big jump. But I know we're also, it's costing us more than we're bringing in for that item.
Yeah.
So, I just think that, you know, for me personally, we can do smaller increases more frequently, you know, to kind of like we would the water on something like this, revisit a little more frequently in the future.
Well, it's been, it's been three years since we set that fee, and in those three years, you hired a seasonal code enforcement that it wasn't anticipated in that original fee that you agreed to.
Right.
So it would be hard to...
Couldn't have anticipated.
Anticipated that. But moving forward, and this rental revenue does not pay for 100% of code enforcement, there's just things it won't cover, because it's not meant to do everything.
But it helps.
It helps.
I think 250 is a good number.
Yeah, yes, okay.
Three years, sorry.
No, it's not like, it's just, you know, it's a big jump, like all at once, when you look at the percentage, to almost double something.
Right, okay.
That's all, I just wanted, look.
Thank you, thanks, $30 a year.
$30 a year.
33.
Okay.
Okay.
250, oh, increase, yeah.
Okay. One of the most important things, and I don't know if anybody realizes, but I love this time of year, the calendar, I love this time of year. So, I was able to put together a report for you regarding what events costs and waterfront costs are for payroll. And that report is going to become handy to you as we go through Richard and Donnie's report that they've put together to review some of the things on the waterfront. Paul had asked what ifs, what if we cut the waterfront budget by 30,000, and what if we cut the waterfront budget by 60,000, what impacts would that have? So I think Richard was very, very detailed, and I know if any of you've read this, it was exciting reading, you barely get your eyes off of it, but...
Well, it was very thorough.
It was good.
I mean, Richard, you're to be commended for your thought process, for the way you analyze all the needed, you know, functions for the simplest of events, that most of us probably, you know, just don't, it doesn't occur to us. So this is very enlightening, and I think you did really an excellent job.
What I'd like to do, and council has reviewed, is to have Richard maybe give a little overview, and then with that said, as we're talking about events, the last item on our discussion this evening will be an event relay for light, and the cost associated, that's our new motive operation. We're going to give you what it costs before you agree, so that we're clear. Okay, so, how do you want to proceed? Do you want to ask Richard's questions, or would you like to just give an overview?
Maybe put a overview, I mean, I don't know, just a brief, highlights?
Well, I, you know, this, I'm sorry, it may be a little overwhelming, I feel like it could have been a book, but I just wanted to highlight a lot of the things that we do that are important to me as far as safety and cleanliness of the beach, and I know that the payroll is, there's a lot of payroll, obviously, you know, it goes into that, but with the operation of the beach and with all the units and activities that go on, and the staffing, and the operating hours, as you can see, it goes very well. I didn't know where to go, I'm sorry, this was the meeting last month, but I didn't know where to go when I was asked to trim anywhere from 30,000 to 60,000, that was sort of like beat myself up on the wall for two days, but, so, I prepared the overview to show you the responsibility, then to try to justify the personnel, the beach personnel, and their responsibilities, and then listed some of my budget considerations for 2019. And with that review, I narrowed it down to two areas to change operating hours, that would save some money that I didn't think would impact the beach or the events. I think if you consider losing events, I think that's going to probably not be a good thing, because of the guests and the residents who have become accustomed to those events. I take it back to the base test, when we first canceled that, the unhappiness and uproar. So, so I narrowed it down for the two areas to change the operating hours, and then I added one area that duplicates responsibilities, I was talking to Donnie, and unfortunately, it's a park manager presentation, in that we looked at that carefully, and those are jobs, those are reasons that we already do year-round, and we have been doing for a number of years, and I'm not quite sure what is involved with that, or if you're planning to move forward with that, if you are, then we'll just have to work, you know, around that to include it. But with those areas, I was able to trim $71,000, so I'll open it up to any more detailed questions if you have.
Richard, in your opinion, the hours of operation from eight to eight, what would be the most noticeable impact?
I think the most noticeable impact would be the response, well, I don't think would get impact so much as that we would have to rely more on our police security that are there every night, to just sort of follow through a little bit more detail while we're not there, as far as patrolling the park areas and the pier. If, I'd say eight to eight, it could be eight to nine, and then be gone for two hours, but in that two-hour window, you know, once word is out, and the fishing pier could probably fill up again, or once we've cleared it, unless the police officers monitor that, and then word gets out, well, we can't go there now, even though it's closed, the police will be there. I think if there's more of a presence of the police officers monitoring the parks and the pier area, and the boardwalk, that would be okay. The impact, I don't, I mean, we'd save money on payroll, obviously.
Well, we're paying more for the police though.
Exactly.
If you did eight to 11, if you did eight to 11 instead of six to 11, like, you're suggesting eight to eight?
Right.
Instead of six to 11?
So we said, what happened between six in the morning and eight?
Yeah, what if you just cut, you know, what if you just did eight A into 11, so you cut the morning time, but not the evening time?
What happens?
Yeah, you'd save, you'd save...
Well, I have, the morning staff is of two people, so from six to eight, that's not much payroll, the evening staff, we have four to five. So you're looking at from six to eight, two people, and then from eight to 11, four to five people.
And you really need that many, if they're going to be...
We've been using that many to clean up, and close up, and lock up, and monitor, you know, patrol the areas, so in the evening, you know, more people out there. During the week, in the morning, they're working, or they're just not going to the beach at six in the morning, so.
Just add a little bit to Richard's, what Richard's saying, the only problem I see closing up early is areas like Summerville Gardens, because of that, even more during the day, like at the four o'clock, you know, we're getting a little late, working something that's gonna happen. We missed Lewis, and Lewis was right there working, so it was a quarter one, it was, you know, a good person, actually, you watch that type of stuff. You know, when it schools up from eight to 11, if Richard has one of his staff there, at least they can call, basically, you need them or whatever, and that's, I just want to add that book, because that's what Summerville Gardens, they had kids, were lining up the water called the rocks the other day, like five, six o'clock, we, you know, fix them in the daytime. Sometimes whenever they even, they go there and block up, so they call the water to run out the front, so that little stuff there might be, I don't think that happens, probably eight to, you know, 11 or something.
And we had to chase off a couple that had spread out blankets and chairs and...
Right, and later, we'd have, biggest thing I'm thinking, Richard owes the papers and that for a book.
Would it be possible to officially close earlier, but still have one or two staff? You know what I mean, so that they clean up all the stuff that you're saying, that you would wrap up by eight, you know, get that stuff wrapped up, but still have one or two waterfront people around, just to make sure, check the park, or make sure people aren't, you know, going out fishing, I mean, could there be some kind of middle ground maybe?
Sure, we developed our evening checklist to move things up that we do, you know, like paying the treks, the dogs nears in the trash can, and things like that, we could shift all that up earlier, and then reduce the evening staff from four to five to maybe two. I don't want to have a single person down for safety.
No, not, I mean, safety, right.
But, um...
But kind of...
So minimal close, and then just have, yeah, two people, maybe just to...
Remind them.
That could be, I mean, just to, I don't know how much happens, save, but maybe that's the way.
Go from one to 10.
Sorry?
Go from one to 10, eight to 10.
Not a lot, because, yeah, we're already, you know...
I was just making it up, I know it's already 10, you can't shut off.
Martha's down there, she's been more than I do, she's here all the time.
I've heard as many people down there between eight and 10, and eight and midnight, actually, wander around. You get, you get events, unless you're caught up, why does they not?
There are just a lot of people, walking and hanging around.
A lot of people, and they're there at 10, 11 o'clock, but, you know, so, I mean, that's just a kind of, kind of staff, and, you know, I don't know what your schedule is going to be for trash, you're sure, Richard, but, I mean, you know, they have to go around and pick up trash for every two hours, typically two... July and August, we are on trash patrol, trash patrol three times every day. Yeah, three times, three times an eight hour shift, about every two... And that's sixty plus trash cans. We got three eight yard dumpster that fill up quick.
So why are we trying, where did this idea of, what we've been doing worked? Where did I do come to try to cut this down, just to see if we...
I think so, because there's been a shortfall in beach revenues compared to the last couple of years.
Just on the beach, right away, so.
Yeah, and I sat with Paul today, thank you, Paul, for, um, asking me to sit with you. And went over the, the, um, the history of the revenue. And I don't think you were aware of that until today, is that correct? Yeah, I think maybe that's where...
Kind of, kind of misleading too, Richard's staff, you know, we only had four people, that's what I was saying, to say, oh, we asked for a sign for no one truck, you know, a couple works probably. And in the past, before, when I first started, you know, we used to have two guys out, they would, um, come on for the events. There weren't as many events back then either, there was a few events, no one here what they have now. But since the Richard's staff taken over, where we had to work weekends and other things and overtime was more expensive, where they were paying less rate per hour, they'd kind of pick up the slack, so we could do both work side work and concentrate folks and whatnot. So he's obviously really, you know, less. You know, since the mayor's eight years and, you know, we had, what, the events probably have hurt since I started.
I mean, do you think we would...
This is kind of misleading for the waterfront grabbing, but he like always market, you can see in his report, I see his throw.
I mean, if you did that official wrap up, or I'm just throwing these out there, I'm not saying it's the right idea, but if you did the official wrap up by eight and had just a couple people that were there to monitor, do you think we'd lose anything? I mean, yeah, we don't want, you know, from this, the safety, or maybe that could work.
We could shift, we could checklist up, up a couple hours to accomplish everything and then reduce the evening staff from five to two, uh, and that would obviously save some money in payroll.
How much would that save, I guess?
I, I'd have to sit down.
Then we'd have to sit down, out there.
But your revenue was down last year, wasn't it, Richard?
It's been down the last two years.
May has been a washout the last two years, the weather, the bucket, quarter.
Weather.
The most of May the last two years is, is been a wrench, especially because of Memorial Day weekend. That historically our busiest weekend, where we would pull in forty thousand dollars in three days. And last year, I think we pulled in five thousand. The year before that, we pulled in seven thousand, for that weekend only. And it, it, it's really hurt us because of the weather. But we could have a great May this year, so...
Can, can I just throw one thing in quickly? Can, can we get the contract we have with this police department that we just increased by nine percent? And see how they can help with these parks and stuff? I mean, we're paying a very large sum of money for these police officers to run around this town. Can you tell me what it says in the contract they're supposed to be doing?
Sure.
Can you say, because we're talking about increasing on this favor, but if they're already here and we're paying them this very large amount of money and there's fourteen of them, and we're given a new car, how can they not drive by these parks more? They're here anyway, right? I mean...
The problem I'm solving, not that it's rough, but at night, as they do drive by, they're obviously want to get out and walk.
Well, no, we, we have a contract with them, why can't we ask them to do this, right? Or, or is the contract more of filling in for the county? To subsidize the county for the police department, or do they actually work with us?
We've acted, man, or we've added an additional, um, or we've added, I guess, the last five or six years, we have an evening officer from six till midnight, just one.
But I'm not talking about extra, we're already paying, I mean, I, I don't, I would like to know, because I've never known. It's like, what does the contract say? Because you hear the rumors out there, I would just like to see, yes, all the extra, that's additional money we're paying. What are the, the, the million they pay and the five hundred we pay? What, what are we supposed to get for that?
But then they get hauled away after something...
Well, no, no, I, I, I'm not here to, I'm not here, I'm not here to pick at it. What I'm trying to find out is, we're saying the park and the pier could maybe, I mean, we're not like a high crime ridden area, couldn't they stop, get out their car and walk to the pier? I mean, I mean...
My question is, if you, from our perspective, would you want, would you want a policeman five hundred yards out on the bay when he gets a call for something happening down the street and it's not, not somebody fishing as opposed to...
I would, I would love to see the number of how many of those calls they get. I don't see it on our reports. What I'm saying is, we got more than one officer working at one time. And they're already allowed to be pulled out of the town to go to Dunkirk. So what's the difference between that cop being in Dunkirk and that cop being on First Street versus the pier? I see no difference. We're already allowed to leave the beach for that. My point, I'm not saying that's the answer, all I'm saying is, they're a vital part in this conversation, they should be a part of this, to me. Unless the agreement says, no, they're here where they can be and if not here, they're not here.
That's not like guaranteed time, they get called, like, Jane, I mean, I know you're bringing that up, they go, I mean, yeah, like...
I think the contract is general and over the years, as Council, new council administrations have come on, they've met with the sheriff and expressed their needs. And usually that's done in the form of a, uh, meeting and things are kind of agreed to. But in reality, we have no control over the deputies. Um, the only thing I can say, and this is my thought process, like, is we give a thirty-three cent differential from county to county. And that's like seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And part of that is one of the services, because services we abide in, one of them is the police.
I mean, that's where we're up to now in California.
One thing, too, I like that, is I can say Ronnie Martin, we're lucky we have Ronnie up here, because he is, he's sitting in the parking lots, he's looking around, I'm calling, I do, a car passed, somebody, um, in front of the radar tower from W L line. Car passed mid, on the hills there, something like that. He pulled him over by the time he got to the road. I mean, if you call, they respond, I think people need to know that, but they, it would help to, you know, more visible maybe.
I don't know, I'm walking.
We got to go through, it's, you know, I'm just saying, maybe, because we do have acres a lot uptown, like, it goes to a tough, you know, three, two hours.
Okay, where, where are we headed with this discussion?
I, I wouldn't know how many we have, because I said we had fourteen assigned, and I think that's about twice what we have assigned.
No, four, for the two towns.
For the two towns.
No.
We only have four, I believe.
Well, I'm curious from Richard, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to compromise our safety and our cleanliness and all the things that you guys do. But if you think that we could accomplish, and it's closing early, is that a problem to close at eight versus, you know, eleven? I mean, if you think that it would, there would be no negative consequence by wrapping things up at eight, but keeping a couple staff till eleven? Hey, I'd love to know, what would that save us? And, you know, would, would that negatively impact your efforts? With all things being equal, we might as well save the money, you know?
Well, once again, there's no, you're not generating any revenue after eight o'clock period.
Right, yeah.
And you're, um, the, the payroll expense isn't there. We could try it and pare it back from five to two and close at eight and still have the two people there along with the police officers, or, uh, we can certainly try it.
See if it works.
Let's save the money, but...
Could you maybe tell us, like, do a cap, you know, calculation to share how much we could save by doing that?
Yeah, I can't do it now.
Oh, no, yeah, just so we get emails.
Tomorrow, maybe I'll, yeah, sure.
Yeah, I mean, just to see what that would... Yeah.
I'm not much, suppose if Richard's schedule too, but you might be interested in doing it Thursday through Sunday. Here's Monday night, uh, or whatever, say, about to worry about it. Thursday nights seem like a nice course to do.
Right.
Can the hours fluctuate?
Sure.
Eight, eight o'clock, like, Sunday, Wednesday, Wednesday, and then to eleven and Thursday, Friday.
I can work whatever the Council, whatever the Council decides, uh, engage you some numbers, just tell me what you want and then I can put it together.
Would that be too hard?
Kind of close, what you think isn't going to make a, a negative impact?
I'm sorry, I got to, but...
So would that be too hard for people to do that, and for, make people understand that? Close at eight, you know, looking probably after close hours?
No, we can just post the hours and, and that's not a problem. And again, this is only for a short period of time, that's only for a couple of months, it's not, you know, something that's year round.
Right, right. Maybe give us those two scenarios, maybe give us, like, during the week, you're saying close a little early at eleven or versus what I said, if you close at eight the whole time, but kept the people there, you know, two people there till eleven.
Right. Um, yes, I can put something together for you. I mean, look at the calendar, um, again, looking at now, till school lets out, when school lets out, then we get into summer, July and August, it's a different air altogether and so it's going to be a little bit choppy there, but I can pull those numbers together for you. And then, um, to include not opening until eight, except at six in the morning as well. Um, because that in itself is, is a smaller chunk of this, but, um...
Okay, when you say not opening, you mean not opening walk-in center, not opening the bathrooms, because?
Right.
Right.
Which, which half?
Both.
Both?
What was in the bathroom?
Watching and...
Yeah, I, I...
You know, I thought about that.
There's so many people down there, I mean, they, they roll in for active, you can find fifteen to walk the morning. And Dunkirk, I mean, down in Summer, they're all in the country. And, you know, close the bathrooms, that are not having a, that are on the morning.
And it's, it's not just Sunrise Garden, Cowals Park is, you know, you're being rehabilitated. You have the building over there where kids gather, uh, field, new equipment, sculpture, new plantings. It's going to, you know, require someone to be over there, it's dark.
Last year, what was it, Saturdays and Sundays, probably Friday evenings, so you, you stationed in attendance in thermistry most days, just keeping eye on things and in traffic.
In Cowals.
No, like, in the third...
In Sunrise Garden.
Sunrise.
Yeah, yeah, once we lost Lewis, then we had a need to have somebody up there to do, you know, the park and also direct traffic in parks. And it worked out very well, I think, um, you know, and we weren't able to do it every day during the week, but primarily on weekends where we had a higher volume of people, so...
But you said it doesn't cost that much money in the morning, maybe it's not worth it to delay opening, you know, till eight? Maybe it's, you open at six and wrap up things by eight and then have the two extra people just to watch things? I mean, to me, that, I don't know, that's, seems like a balance or not.
So let, let me quickly address the reasoning here, this is kind of based on the request I put in, uh, last month. And as Richard said, we sat down today, kind of discussed this, and looked at these numbers and also these historical numbers. So right now, I look at the numbers, uh, if we follow the revenue generation from the past two years, our revenue is going to shortfall about seventy-six thousand dollars for waterfront operations this year if it follows the last two years. However, Richard showed me the, the numbers from two years, three, four, five, six years ago. And if we have numbers like that, then that's covered.
Right.
Right, so it's really going to come down to whether it's a shortfall, some kind of a delay.
Right.
That's, that's kind of what we're really debating here is...
We wouldn't want to...
I've been, I've been debating that, but, right, anyway. We're debating how much we want to hedge our, hedge our bets.
Right.
It is basically what's...
Yeah, and we're, and we're...
I think two weeks later this year?
Because of the beach stretch, probably.
Beach, beach, so, so we're, we're going to lose a little bit. Well, save, lose too, because we're losing the revenues for the beach. Yeah, but yeah, we're saving staffing, but we're losing revenue, so...
Which could be bigger, maybe more, you can look at...
Well, the plus is, I don't know if this makes a difference, the plus is we're still in FY eighteen until June thirtieth. So if we have a great May, then it's going to show you that we bounced back, but then what's going to happen next May?
Yeah, that, that's, yeah. Okay. But, you know, another, another slide is, and if you still tap that off, movies...
Kind of how much we call it, night, night, four, five, ten, ten, ten.
If it's right out, that, that, that money, that's it. You know, so, that, that's something, and of course, that's not a revenue generating event anymore. But, you know, these, these, there's different things we did and just, you're just not going to generate revenue.
Can we talk a little bit about the park ranger, uh, the park manager?
Sure, but before you, oh, can we, uh, look at the bathrooms? That's the other, um, savings. The restrooms used to close in the off season, eight to four, but we had requests last year to open them and they'd open later. So now they're eight to eight in the off season. That is also the ten thousand dollar payroll expense for, um, seven months of the year that you didn't have before. So if you want to continue with that, or if you want to, um, go back to the off season, eight to four for the restroom schedule.
So the additional four hours per night, it's cost ten thousand. I, how much did they get you?
A lot.
Yeah, I know, like, they leave you a little open, you know.
Yeah, they'll be back.
Yeah, leave open.
Yeah.
This is, uh, this is way too much to discuss right now, because it wasn't on anybody's agenda, but I was just thinking, if you had, and I know we have a great Mr. Russo, but if you had ten dollars a car to park in the parking lot, and we somehow recapture that money, Richard can take probably a hundred fifty cars there on Friday, a busy Friday. You could have for three day, three weekend days, you know, generated five grand a weekend. Near, near ten weekends, that's fifty grand.
Probably.
Parking all over the street. Yeah, that's a problem, because I did have a lady...
You'd have fun free parking.
Right. I had a lady come up, who agreed you could come up on the last one day, so, oh, do we have to take the parking, do we have to do this? So they're kind of expecting it, but like you said, it's all, all that, you know, parking the street, block everything else.
Yes, that's a problem. That's what, that's what...
Solve one problem, that is a problem.
Parking issue forever, I guess.
So perhaps one, Richard, go forward, not, not the park manager, let's keep that in the discussion tomorrow. But perhaps we could prove the budget as currently proposed and let Richard kind of try different things throughout the season and sort of see what works best, right? We try doing only two people a night or something like that.
Sure, I mean, I can, if you have something coming in at six, and just, I have one person here, that's not a safety issue in the morning for me, anyway. I'll open the bathrooms and open and then more staff in the evening later in the morning. Then in the evening, I can turn that back from five to three, because there's no revenue involved, and see how that goes and then bump up the checklist responsibilities.
Great.
Okay, let's talk about the park manager.
I'll, I'll jump in with a question, um, so a lot of this, Richard, you said that you guys are already doing? So I'll just speak to a couple concerns that, that I have.
Yes, in, in my overview, there's a, a list in there, um, that shows you, uh, back in February, I was asked to put together a list of the things that we have been doing for each park area, and that's in your overview report. And then in the proposal, you'll see that those same items are copied and distributed proposal for the park manager and then a few other things you're adding.
Well, one, one of the concerns is down, um, at Long Beach specifically, we have the living shoreline that we've invested all of this money in. You know, I have a vantage point from my house, I watch the water come in and out, just using this as an example. Do you or someone on, on your staff or Donnie, I mean, do we feel confident about checking that? I mean, I worry about erosion, I see changes over there. I don't know that it has to be a park manager, I, I don't care how we necessarily address these issues, so long as they're addressed. I don't know if it's, do we need like a gene slayer, a contract for them to come down and inspect that twice a year? I mean, is, is that being checked? Like, do we feel like we have the expertise with some of those plants and erosion and those kind of things?
We can, but if public works, check was very easily, like, once a week to check it, but when you see erosion, like, effects of thighs and something else we have, I don't know if you can correct that, but we can definitely note it.
I don't know, I don't say correct, if it just, is it, is it doing what it's supposed to be doing? Is there, is there a breach? I mean, you know, um...
We can definitely check that, and take pictures of community, Richard, because he's always there for that and never, uh, told us we had a big... You know, we see a problem, they're not, and we know, we need to, we can do a checklist once a week to go over.
Sometimes I just wonder, do we, do we, do we know, you know, it's kind of one of those, you don't know what you don't know? Like, do we know if all of these things are a problem? That's, you know, and maybe you guys can do it, or maybe we need to think about having gene come down once a year? I don't know, I just, we spend a lot of money on parks and landscaping and just want to make sure that we protect that amount.
I, I think a lot of what you're talking about, it's for erosion and plant, 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 plant life management, whatever, whatever you want to call it, is way, you know, the skill set of any employee we have right now.
Well, that's kind of what I'm saying, is...
You know, so, I mean, you know, that's... You know, because, you know, and I see what Richard means with, with your, you know, various duties that were developed for park managers is, is, are kind of duplicating much of what our, our town staff already does with these public works or, or, or the beach, beach staff.
Right, I mean, in the proposed park manager, there were a little more, like, high techy things like that, Jane, so that, I just, there's, I think some of them, yes, you guys are doing, but there may be a few things I'm wondering if...
That type of something we might need to actually more contract out.
Yes, right.
Rather than have somebody more staffed.
Right.
And, and I think, you know, but maybe they cost more to contract that out, I think, a lot, a lot easier.
We want the right person, like, yeah.
We want cleaner doing that.
Well, and I think when we first built the shoreline, I think that was part of the contract for a certain period, Joanna, I mean, shared that document for the first year or two, they were doing inspections, it's sort of like a warranty on a car, like, can we get an extended, uh, you know, warranty, but then just, even if it's just checking it twice a year or something, you know?
And I thought it was with the plantings too, if that continues.
And the plant, yeah.
And then that continues.
Right, and there'll be a full-time staff member to do that, which is, yeah, exactly. However, maybe, I don't know, find out from Gene, what, what do they typically do, like, after they build that kind of thing, you know what I mean?
He hadn't really got yet, and he spoke to a lot of people, probably three years, so the plants, he sort of held back, I thought he'd be here this month.
Yeah, he said he was going to be.
Right, and finish up over there, and then we, he's gonna look at the shoreline, we see it, but um, he's just, all the way, and what I think is, in our staff, and look at it, we can see that it's erosion, we can see that we need to call somebody that is more professional, well, but I'm trying to say, like, I can't face it, we can, we can go looking, you know, it's the grass, and this, and we can make a call, hey, Gene, it's really getting worse.
Right.
Maybe come down and take a look.
But in addition to that, I think, for us, I think we'd all feel more comfortable too, if we didn't just wait till we saw a problem, but have maybe twice a year, or whatever it means to be scheduled checks, right, are we saying that?
One thing would be, we might have to do it more than twice a year.
Yeah, four times, maybe.
If you get a storm or hurricane, you might have to, it's it's all about weather related, it's not weather.
You know, I understand what Richard's saying about that the tasks were identified, because part of it was, just listen to your discussion, that the waterfront takes a lot of time and effort, okay? So the question is, with the majority of people working on, you know, involved in the waterfront, from the public, and the type of work that has to be done from, you know, dealing with the trash, dealing with patrol, making for crowd control, are people in or out of the park gets required? One of them is, as you look at all the other parks that we have in this town, is, are they getting the short end of the stick? Because you're, just this discussion of, well, maybe we could do this, maybe we could do that, nobody knows what to do with these parks, right? I mean, it's always a second thought in everybody's mind of, oh, that's right, we should check Walton Beach, oh, that's right, we should probably check wetland, you know, park to see if the beavers are cutting down our trees, or, you know? So I think that's one of the reasons why the environmental committee, for several years now, has been talking about a park manager, because these parks do need somebody to pay attention to them as parks, not just as the people use it in the parks, or that there's trash involved, but these are, you know, living places that need somebody who has the skill, the knowledge, and the ability to look at them. And I think that's why some of the duties we we selected from what Richard had had, because it's like, you know, if we have a park manager, that can be their responsibility, now it's, he doesn't have to worry about some of these other duties in the other parks, because the park manager can help manage that.
As a park manager, I mean, the living shoreline, I almost feel like is its own.
Oh, right.
Is that even over above a park manager?
Right, but you, somebody mentioned, we could get a contract. Okay, well, who's managing that contract? Who's deciding that the contract is actually working? I mean, that's where, like I said, I think that the the thought of this park manager is that that this town has resources that are exceeding the current staff's capabilities. I mean, I really feel, just like I said, you listen to what you're saying, and you're, you're kind of on the bare edge of being able to do everything that needs to be done from a waterfront perspective, and now, you know, we're also saying, well, now you've got to deal with the, the, you know, wetland overlook park, and you got to deal with Walton Beach, and you got to deal with Cowals Park, and, you know, and, you know, we are required to have treatment, who is the staff person who's doing the treatment? You know, where's, where is that position? When sustainable Maryland comes in, you know, to have somebody whose responsibility is to maintain something like our sustainable Maryland community, the request to be a tree city, you know, whose question, you know, who's going to be actually doing that? So the committee sort of looked at all these tasks that kind of are just, said, oh, well, somebody will do that.
Karen, do you all envision this as a twelve-month or eight or nine-month?
It would be an eight or nine-month position, yeah. And like, I think if you, I think as a physician said, obviously in the winter, if there's something like a major snowstorm coming in, you know, you have somebody to come in and help for emergency situations, or special events, polar bear plunge, you know, you would have one more staff to kind of help.
How many hours, I mean, I'm just like, how many hours are we talking about?
Oh, it's thirty-six thousand, presumably.
Well, that included fringe, the period of time was only from April to October.
How many months is that?
Six months.
I think only one through the end of October, or again, October, down in the.
Is that based on overtime person or part time?
I think it was considered.
I mean, during those, during those hours.
I think during those hours, I think it was down to be a sort of a forty-hour region.
Karen, I, Karen, I agree with you. With placed a lot of resources and a lot of talent in to upgrading North Beach as a destination, and the parks are an important part of that role, they're playing an important part. Now, we have basically a beautiful Sunrise Garden that, as I've been watching it, and I watch it fairly regularly, as the numbers increase, the potential for abuse increases. The Cowals Park is being upgraded, the Overlook Park, and the Walton Beach, I think you do have to consider that a park area.
It is a park, yeah, it has a special need.
And and we need someone, uh, not just, I'm not talking about picking up trash, I'm talking about someone whose focus is the parks, and their, their maintenance, uh, and is not to, you know, sidetrack with other responsibilities. I guess the point I'm saying, trying to make, is that the parks in North Beach now have reached a point where there needs to be one person overseeing them, whose focus is the parks, and and not someone that we, you know, catch the parks, you know, when we can, and that's not a, you know, swear on Richard, but he doesn't have the parks as his focus, it really is more on the waterfront, and trash pickup.
Yeah, I I think the proposal in committee is, is not, is not, is not, is not, and off the water, of basically not work in it, pick up trash, shut the trash cans. Yeah, but I mean, more so than what what I think you guys really wanted it to be, for somebody to monitor the the ecosystem.
Right, because like Sunrise Garden is a classic example, it's what, three years old now?
Uh, it will be, no, it will be dead.
Yeah, about to have.
It'll be exterminated.
Three dollars.
Right. You're looking at a living being.
Yes.
Those plants are growing, they're changing, and to a certain extent, that's kind of, see, so you're right, the the proposal was very like grunt work day to day.
Yeah.
But the intent was to have somebody whose responsibility is, you know, to to manage these parks as a park, and and, you know, not just focus on, well, got to get there twice a day, pick up the trash.
And 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 that's what I got out of a lot of the environmental, it's pick up the trash, you know, rake weeds, you know, more so than that, and and you're you're talking more about some guy that can go tell the landscaping company that they need to redo the marsh around the trees, burn the trees.
Right, that's where.
Done and cracked.
Correct, right, and that's where there wasn't been in the presentation about managing contracts, you know, and things like that.
But then, but the the trash thing is important, like at North Beach, like right now, I was, I was telling Gene, things, I mean, things wash up there, it's a fetch, there's a couple of plastic chairs that.
Is that thing still there?
So the boat floated away.
I I don't see, you know, gathering, picking up trash as a responsibility of a park manager.
No, no, that's what I was gonna say, Mayor, but I still with, I think there's some hybrid here, so there's Richard's crew that does, they pick up the trash there, but I think we do kind of need to go beyond and look at, there's, yeah, there's a boat that was stuck on the rocks, there's a couple of big things, yeah, so, so there's the 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 trash area, and kind of going beyond just picking up the trash in that particular park, just walk the beach, and then there's the park man, there's the other aspect of caring for the living shoreline, and and we still may need a contract specifically for the living shoreline. I don't know that a park manager would have that skill or they could manage that.
It really, you know, the assumption is the park manager would not have that skill, you might be lucky to hire somebody that has skill, just like you might not have somebody who's an arborist, but that's a skill that would be very useful for somebody who understands the tree, so that could assist with the tree maintenance and.
Does that really need to be full-time during that time? We need that many hours?
Right, and so part of the reason it's that many hours is because of the hours of operation, so if you don't have a, you know, so part of it is how does this, the time, how does their work schedule reflect the public usage of the parks? So that that's where some of the hours come in, so just like you guys talked about, is six o'clock in the morning when they have to be out there? No, but more than likely, they have to be out there at six o'clock at night, when in the summer, there's likely to be somebody out walking their dog at Walton Beach at six o'clock at night. So part of it is, uh, the hours sort of are related to the fact that the season we're having on work is the most busy and extended day come period of the year, so. And and like I said, then there's, you know, there's all the other things that really could benefit from having somebody who's a park manager related to the special events, of adding a dynamic feature that connects the town resources to some of the environment, or some of the special events that are happening out there, so there's, but I just feel like, it's not that I, that these two guys aren't doing a great job, it's just that you see that it's, there's great things.
Karen, how how likely are you to find someone who'll take that position for eight months a year?
I think you you would find somebody, um, you know.
And you think that maybe on a recurring basis?
Yeah, I think so, I think you would, you would find somebody.
I mean, I interviewed someone, I don't know, whatever happened to me.
Yeah, because like the state parks often have ten-month contract employees, and basically, they work for the ten months and that contract ends, and generally, the assumption is you come come back the next year as the next contract, and, yeah, that's how a lot of the park rangers in like, point lookout, say, or those kinds of employees.
And maybe finally, even, you talked about the, um, the tree committee, or some of these other things, I mean, could they be nice, if somebody could be helped, who understands some of those funding sources?
Yeah, it's based on American.
Exactly, exactly, and lead some of the the tree thing, or whatever, you know?
Yeah, I think there's, there's things that are just sort of falling through the cracks that were, you know, at this point, I think it's time to really take, you know, I don't want to say take them seriously, but sort of take pride in the fact that there's a lot more that could be done in some of these sites that right now you can't because it's bare bones, and, you know, speaking from experience from like the staff I have at Flyponds, is we are bare-bones staff, so they basically do crowd control and trash pickup, so they will walk past areas that really need somebody's attention from, whether it's invasive barberry growing in the trails, or there's, uh, you know, the boardwalks are starting to, you know, de, you know, decompose, they just, they they don't have a lot of time because their focus is crowd control and trash, and so that's what I'm trying to kind of, that the environmental committee is looking at, can we get our parks beyond just crowd control and trash?
I think that's, I think you all right on.
And protect what we have.
Are you, are you interested in this job?
Maybe, no, no. But I, I see a couple people who who would be happy.
Well.
Yeah.
Okay.
What's next?
I guess we can start with some of the councils, if anyone has any specific questions.
Yeah, sorry, did you want to address Relay for Life?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was saying, I was saying that to the end, but we can do that. Relay for Life, I gave you a sheet of paper, looks like this. And I'm not sure everyone was here the last time, but you may remember that there was a request to move it from the fairgrounds to here, and they were between, doing it in May or doing it in October. Well, they kind of settled with May of twenty nineteen. Some of the things, notes that Stacy took from the meeting, and I'll, I'll just lay it out for you. Second Street to Fifth Street would be teams of arts and craft vendors, either be food vendors on Third Street, there would be a car show on Fifth Street, there would also be dumpsters and porta pots, um, somewhere in the area, so there would be multiple street closures. They would like to consider American Cancer Society as the donor for the next polar bear plunge, uh, farmer's market, they will attend the first farmer's market, and last market of the year with twenty eighteen, Real Men Wear Pain Campaign, and then Relay for Life bracelets worn the day of will have free access to the beach. They're not asking for the beach to be open for free for anyone else, but I don't know what the quantity of life bracelets are, or how many, or who gets them, or who gets them, so.
Richard's estimate is twenty-seven hundred bucks for staff?
Twenty-seven hundred, but I think, we got to include the unforeseen protective expenses of thousands.
Yes.
Twenty-seven hundred hours.
Right, I think that could be covered if the polar bear plunge proceeds were credited, you know, to the town.
To this.
To to cover this event.
Well.
And that way, it is still donated to Relay for Life, but the town uses it to absorb its cost.
Well, um, the other thing was they were calling a luncheon event, a luncheon on the pier?
Well, they haven't decided yet, either they don't have it ever to ride in Rio, or they, you know, look at, um, look at the end of the year, they get that to, and they're there.
And have a catering.
So.
Have a catering.
So those are things, now, just like with the dragon boat, we talked about the revenue, and there's a weekend, and I love the dragon boat, but we get no revenue, and we have no beach revenue either, and it's a crowded event, so anyone who may be calming down, not to go to the dragon boat, but go to the beach, might be deterred, they don't have that. Same thing for this, it looks like there's a lot going on for those six hours, someone may be coming down, you.
Can we open the north, the north side of the beach during the dragon boat races?
We have the beer, the beer.
It's, they're not, they're not doing that this year.
Oh, they are?
They're not doing beer or doing beach this year.
Or the van?
No.
Well, then this year we can.
Yeah, let's do that.
We can charge from the beach this year.
So then you have to make a decision, are we charging everybody that want to get, that wants to go into the beach, or?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, even participants in the festival and?
Yes.
The team, okay, yeah, okay. Then.
Well, again, all, all, all paddlers have, have.
Have a stance.
Have a stance.
So.
You think about exempting the paddlers? They're not gonna have time to.
They don't have time to.
I don't believe it.
Do you? Our, our team does.
Yeah, like, again, like, I'll go down, like, between races, if it's really hot, like, what the passion was, when you're bored, it's really hot, you go in, jump in, just to cool off.
Yeah, the other reason we, we have a charge is because we use all the beaches, but if we open the north side, then we can charge.
Well, you have access to go to the south beach, you know, so you can't.
But but they, but they don't let me, the roof, I'm not on that.
Yeah. We don't have anybody on the south side or the little side during the whole festival.
Yeah.
Once the festival's over, then we open all the beaches.
They, they control, they control the whole south side, so.
Yes.
The only people down there are people that are paddling or preparing to.
Right.
The dates are May nineteenth and a rain day for May twentieth.
My only concern, this is the rain date, being.
A Monday.
A Monday, um, gonna be down there, like, so, that's my only concern, is it be a Monday, and people live in that section, so no access that day, I think, on, on a day where I get to go to work.
Yeah.
Is problematic.
I agree with, I agree with, thank you.
The, I think what aren't included in that total are, if there is a luncheon on the pier, that would change the payroll costs for us to clean. that would change the payroll costs for us to clean the pier and to monitor it, keep the gates closed for the luncheons, it definitely add more payroll costs, and if there's any additional work that needs to be done on Third Street for power and water, that's on his group, so that's not there, I agree.
And if you move to rain gate, you're moving further towards Memorial, which is our revenue generating.
When are you, when are you scheduled to meet with them again?
I don't have another meeting at this time.
I think that Monday's, that's a serious problem.
I think he's going Saturday.
That's a, that's a. Yeah, Saturday, Sunday.
That's a deal breaker.
Actually, this, I think the date is, is the eighteenth, Jen.
It says the twentieth, you know, when you're known as twenty-fourth.
Saturday, Sunday. How many people are we talking about at the luncheon?
I don't know, I, yeah, I, I don't think they do.
Just curious.
What was the question?
How many people would be at the luncheon, potentially?
They said choosing that one, fifteen or sixteen.
And they're, they're leaning more towards riding rail, because some of them are still in, you know, maybe need air conditioning.
I'd say AC.
I can't go to one of our restaurants, I can't think of one of our restaurants.
No, it's not big enough. Our restaurants are big enough.
Maybe have parking for whenever they rest, where we put our beach people.
Stacy, can you check them in?
Saturday.
I think Saturday is on that.
Yeah.
It's eighteen, like.
Is it Sunday or Monday, it's had to move down to the next Sunday, to Memorial, like, Sunday.
That's still a long way. So, they come over here, they use all their stuff, and they go spend all their money in Chesapeake Beach.
Probably don't have any food trucks moving.
Yeah.
And we don't pay their tax, and they don't pay their tax. Okay, so, where's the something in restaurants?
Something's everywhere.
Where's the restaurants?
So, I think Joey is asking how you feel about this event.
So, which stays?
It's Saturday, it's on the eighteenth.
I have no problem with you again, I mean, really, and even the cost, if we can absorb it, even if we can't absorb it, to the.
That would be good.
Has a camp to survive, I like.
Yeah, I'll see, I agree, take it personally.
I just kind of say one thing, the rain date, all right, the time is from four to ten P M, so you can't allow, you can't allow people on which side, the north side, ahead of time, so then if it doesn't happen, you don't have people there to get any revenue that you've lost, and then you have a rain date, does it have to have a rain date?
All right, is that a deal breaker? All right, you're, you're talking two things about revenue.
Yeah, possibly.
Wait, are you talking Relay for Life, or are you talking dragon boat?
I'm Relay for Life.
Relay for Life doesn't affect the revenue of the beach, we're open.
Yeah.
It's just only going to, in, in, the traffic won't be able to come down the avenue, it'll be shut off just like the dragon boat festival.
Okay, okay.
It usually had a whole, of course, in Rockview, everybody, I haven't done the fairgrounds over there, there was an all-night affair, and, and I see they're contracting it now, four hours, one hundred and forty-four.
I don't want to, I'm serious.
They haven't done it over like, a couple of years.
On a sign of that, maybe we'll do one in nineteen, normally we do it on the third Saturday, we have to move it, so. Yeah, yeah, that'll just be for nineteen, twenty.
Okay, so that, that was my presentation of the budget, and you have this storm, what awaits, the mayor has proposed those to you, and it's basically the same thing we did last year, trying to soften that blow, as we move forward.
The coming years, later on, I have to.
We talked about that.
Yeah, spread out, it's spread out.
We're on six-year plan, and now it's set to five-year back. I'm working.
Working on my two parts, I say.
All right.
This is awesome, I love it.
Here's what's up.
I want to talk about the cost of Relay for Life.
Yes.
I want to talk about one more thing on the budget, the council's, I'm really not in favor of it, but if we do it, I think it should be broken down into X per meeting, and if there's no meeting, we don't have to take that paycheck, more or less, because if we're being paid, it's sort of, now it's a job, so if you don't work, you shouldn't be paying. So, that would mean if you don't call a work session, that next council won't take a paycheck that day, because if you take the three thousand, break it up into twenty-four, let's say every month, you have two meetings, that's a hundred and twenty-five a meeting.
Some of you, some places don't have work.
I, I don't.
I guess so.
I'm just saying, we do.
That would be a nightmare for me.
I, I'm, I'm just saying, my baseline is, I'm not for it. But I wouldn't be for it if it was broken down into that type of pay cycle, because that's what makes sense, if anybody were to question anything.
I don't even think, I don't even think you have to accept it, that you.
That's right, you don't have to.
I know, I'm just wanting to.
I think it's, it's a, it's a, for the responsibility, which is twenty-four seven of being a council member, the town as a team, it's not where you walk up the steps and come to the meeting.
No, I, I know, and again, I'm at home.
I think the town's gone too long without recognizing contributions that council members made.
I, I do actually have a second question, I would like to, since that's considered solid, is that toward, is there any? It's a tiny amount, okay, it's not stake costs, no more.
Yeah. So, like.
They have way taxes on them.
It's an income.
You don't buy it out.
Yeah.
Wouldn't add something to the agenda.
Pardon me?
Wouldn't add something to the.
Oh, for the, yeah, the future, I did add that, just a little bit. I, I think you guys, Stacy, did an email together, not to spend a lot of time on that, but just, I thought just we should have an opportunity in case anybody had questions, just to make sure, I've received a lot of questions about next steps, what's the process, what happens from here, and so Stacy shared in the email, the EDC is going to meet with the Planning Commission, I mean, it really, it's a planning issue for trucks, but I mean, it's also at least, you know, as importantly, an economic development issue, right? So to have some input as the next phase to come up with the criteria for these pilots, you know, beginning with the end in mind, I mean, how are we defining, we're calling it success, what does that look like, how are we measuring that? I know, Paul, you're really concerned about, I put my psych, you know, research hat on, I mean, if you're going to do a pilot, you're always, what, what's the goal, and how are you measuring that? The last thing I think we want is for the Planning Commission to come back and recommend and say, the pilots were a success, and then be questioned, well, how, how do we define success? So I think to have the, the EDC involved, and have stakeholders representing the businesses, I think coming together will be, you know, a great way to make sure that they are covered, and to look at, you know, how we're defining that, and even, and on the, on the ground the day of, but the Planning Commission, they're working really, really hard on this, and so we've said, you know, the day of, if there's logistic support, whatever, we want to be there to, to support them. But that's my, so, you know, I don't know if there's any other pieces, and Stacy, if you have anything, but so my understanding, so when we get asked by the public, we're going to meet with them, come up with criteria, we have the two pilots, it'll be measured, they'll pull something together, and then come back to us and make a recommendation based on those pilots, right? Were they a success, were they not, or what that is, right? And then we can decide whether to accept that or not, okay? So I just wanted to kind of put that out there, so we all understood the process the same way.
And I'd like to add something to that, what's the, what would be the process of putting this to a referendum, and voting on, would have the people vote for the food trucks or not?
I would be, I would be opposed to that. And that, that doesn't rise to the level of taking, of taking it and putting it on the ballot.
Yeah, but this, I don't even think this is really ordinance, that's such, that, that would probably be a referendum.
Well, is it changing to the, maybe it changed the planning zoning?
The planning zoning study is one ordinance that we adopted, then we can change the area.
The parts of, the, the.
Right, exactly.
It's already allowed, isn't it?
Yeah, and it's allowed anyway.
On, well, we have it on the ticket, right? We have it on.
July fifth, I mean, July nineteenth?
July seventh, and, yeah, so there's two, there's one more.
Two scheduled.
They're spread around, and then another one.
There's one spread around, and the second one is on Fifth Street, which is really nice.
Spread around, how it's spread around?
Two, 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 and two.
Two, 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 and two. It's in the email.
Third, I think the third in Chesapeake, and then third, and third in by Sunrise Garden, and then.
One down by CrossFit Mexico. CrossFit Mexico.
Would you put the barbecuing down there by Sunrise Garden? We have a motion for adjournment.
Somebody over there, oh, reading.